Everybody please leave us with a pledge.
All right. Everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask Kurt Hook to please read us for the invocation.
Father, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings you give us. We pray for this meeting, Lord, that everything that is said and done will be to glorify you and your son. We just pray that you look over our county. Please help the ones with COVID and all other illnesses, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, everyone is aware we, uh, here it gets on, let Tom take it. Everybody get y'all out of the way.
Truettland County is considering making some changes to their solid waste collection process and services within the county. It's my understanding that the county has advertised and requested proposals from prospective trash collection services. It's my understanding and appears we have three proposals that were submitted, was it today? Today. I think at this time, we're going to open them up. Now, I want to state for the record, we're going to open them up, but this is a workshop tonight. We cannot take any action. My guess is the, um, the board between now and the next meetings probably going to examine these individually, and we'll probably, my guess is that the next meeting we discuss it. May not even take any action at next month's meeting.
We're going to try to have it here in first and have a discussion by the board.
All right, in no particular order, I'm going to open up first the one from All Green Services out of Statesboro. I'll be honest, I don't know if this is a single line item proposal or if it's multifaceted, so I don't know if it will lend itself. Okay, here we go. All Green has made a proposal for as to roadside services, $12.95 per cart. I assume that's per month? On additional carts, $10 each per cart, and on roll-off containers, $190 per haul plus 50 per month rental per can. The proposal has, uh, they have a, uh, a proposed agreement, a list of referrals and references, and we will have copies available for all the commissioners on that. Next is from Ryland Environmental out of Dublin, Georgia. Cost proposal. All right. Ryland has submitted a proposal of on roll-off containers, $125 per haul. As to curbside collection for residential purposes, Ryland, it says Ryland would charge the county the sum of $14.50 per house per month billed and collected. And then our final proposal is from Republic Services of Vidalia. All right. Republic makes a, kind of make a multifaceted proposal. As for residential curbside collection, option one, $12 per cart per month with no price increase over a five-year term. Option two is $11.35 per cart per month with a yearly 2% price increase for a five-year term. Their proposal calls for a minimum of 1,200 carts and a potential fuel adjustment if the price of fuel increases by over 10% from the price of fuel on the first day of the contract.
Roll off.
Right. And I, I'm assuming in, in, in all cases of, of residential curbside for these, Republic specifically says Republic not charged for the disposal at Tooms County landfill. I assume in all cases, the county is paying all what we call tipping fees, not necessarily.
No, I suppose with $14.50 including the tipping fee, and if you'll notice it's noted in there that the county can deduct the tipping fee from that.
And I'm just, I'm just reading these on the fly, and that's why we're, we'll be comparing these.
So that $14.50 with y'all?
Includes the tipping, includes the tipping.
All right. Republic's, Republic's appears to be option one, $12 with no price increase over five years, but the county pays the tipping fees.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Sam, how are we to interpret your bid?
Same as Republic.
Same as Republic?
Y'all pay the tipping.
Okay. And then for Republic, their roll-off service at a, at a convenience site is $166.80 a haul with the same provisions about a potential fuel increase and the county paying the tipping fees. And, um, each of these packets appears to be 10 or 15 pages long. Shouldn't be a problem for us to have copies available for all the commissioners. And ultimately, copies of all this will be available for the public too. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if you came for this segment of the, of the meet, of the workshop, we thank you for your attendance, and we will not be taking any action at this time.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank y'all, we'll be in touch.
Give that to Madam Clark.
Quinn's trying to call in here. I'm declining, I'll call in right here. Excuse me just one second. Commissioner Hollis, you still with us?
I am.
Okay. Guess he didn't want to talk to me, he just wanted to talk to you. I need to call my phone back. All righty, um, other part of the meeting, I wanted to call the meeting today. Um, I thought it would be imperative and I think it'd be beneficial to the board to, um, kind of have a little planning stage on, since we're breaking over into a new year, kind of set some goals and some things that we'd like to work for. At this time, I'd like to ask each commissioner, um, I'll give you five, or however, how long you may, five or 10 minutes. You may can pull it right off the top of your head, you may can, may take you longer than that, but I'd like for each commissioner to kind of come up with like the three topics, three most things that you'd like to see this board worked, worked toward, and what's kind of your most important three, and if it's four or five, that would be fine too. But I'd like for us as a board to kind of fill out where each member is. Um, if there's anything that where we're at, it's not where that member would like to see it, or if they'd like to see anything changed, or us work for a board to do, you know, something in the future with, um, where we at and where we headed. Currently, the projects we have, we have a roof on the courthouse, and, um, as soon as our SPOSS, our sales tax starts building back up, you know, as far as I know, in the, in the, in the discussion I've had with the board, was try to, and the constitutional officers, just let's try to look at, um, doing our remodel, start our remodel on the defects building for office, much-needed office space and operational space and storage space for the county. But at this time, we got, everybody got a piece of paper or you don't need anything else. I'd like to give each, each member maybe five minutes here to collect their thoughts, letting them know they want to, to, um, come up with maybe the top three goals of what they'd like to see the board try to, um, set forth this year with. Anybody need anything?
No, I think, I didn't know anything about what the meeting was about. Did everybody else know? Because I have no thoughts about.
Well, I mean, and, and that's fine too, if no one has anything that they want to add. I just, I got some things I want to say, and I want to get some feedback off the board, whether the board wants to pursue, stand flat, or digress, either way.
I think what we need to do is, is do this at another time then, because I think if, to be fair to us, we should have, have some, a heads up on what the meeting was about, so we could have came up with our thoughts and looked at some things that we want, want to work on.
Okay, well, um, being that we're all here, if anyone has anything that they'd like to bring up to discussion, uh, we can entertain it at this time. So I'm going to give everyone just a second to think about it, and then, um, the ones who want to partake can. If not, we can set up another, another meeting at some other time to, uh, discuss what some, some other, some, what someone else may want to do. But I did have on the agenda, planning discussion, and to me, planning's kind of, you know, what we plan to do. And I said it just enough broad so everybody could have discussion at the matter and, um, and go forth for that.
Well, I start, I don't have anything, I, I need to think about mine, so I would like to do mine at another time.
That, that's not a problem.
Excuse me, boss, you have a text message.
Is that, is that, is that okay with you, Commissioner Hollis?
I'm fine, I mean, I got a few things that y'all ready now.
All right, well, I'll tell you what.
Lay it on us.
Vice Chair, you have the floor.
The first thing I want is really to get the courthouse underway. I know we're working on the roof, but the main thing is getting that remodeled. I know we want a defect building remodeled, but also the courthouse, since we have, um, more than one, um, come to us about the courthouse, so that'll be my number one. The other thing is, um, I want to, and I always work on this myself too, but one thing is to get our handbook. Our first one, that handbook, um, revised, because it hasn't been revised in a while, so that's one thing that I was planning to work on. Um, another one would be the, getting the parking for the semi trucks that I, um, brought up in the last meeting. That'd be one project that, that I would like to work on.
Kayla, let me ask this. When you say parking for semi trucks, are you meaning having the county or the city provide an area where people, when they come home from work with a semi truck, can park it somewhere?
Right, I had brought it up in the, um, in the last meeting that people have been coming to State Councilments and to us asking for parking, so I want to do a joint venture in finding somewhere for them to park.
I see. Yes, ma'am.
And I had something else, but no, it over my head. I, I bring it back on, but that's all for right now.
Mr. Powell?
Well, I, I can say one thing that I want to work on, and it, um, it would pretty much put to my attentions when we met, me and, uh, if they would met with, uh, ambulance service. I didn't like what I heard at all, not one bit. I want to be honest with you. They got three ambulances sitting over there, and they can't provide, provide somebody for backup when they got an ambulance out of town, that's going to be going out of town for two hours, and another call may come in? Something's wrong. But I don't see what it's going to cost, it should cost the county $400,000 a year just to put an extra man or two over there when they go, you know, if two calls comes in at one time. I don't know what the answer will be. It, you know, might be that we need to look at it, doing it ourselves, or, or what, what all, but I just, I'm going to be honest, I didn't like that at all.
Probably, and probably with my discussion, would you probably, and not put words in your mouth, but I'd just say probably your number two would probably be what we're facing with the trash service.
Well, yeah, trash service is a problem with me, yes. But I brought, you know, I've got a picture right here where you got trash all out, almost out in the road.
Commissioner Gillis, is this discussion right here, does it brought anything that you may want, made my tip something off your head you may want to add to the discussion?
I want to go ahead and get my thoughts all together.
Okay. Tom, I, and I'll tell you where we at, and this is why I wanted to have this. Um, we, I, I went back to the ambulance service also, and I, I myself, I'm not happy with what we're getting, nor do I like the number they give us. Um, and we're looking at some other options. I reached out to them and told them, you know, obviously, the guy that's down here that we're dealing with, he's a hired employee in place, so I reached out with him to, um, back in the past when we had problems with ambulance service, the, I'm going to call them the big cheeses from Navisont come down and sat down at this table with us, and we worked through some problems that we had, and we were able to, to at that time, I think, um, resolve some of our issues, but we have reached out to them, and Tom, you said you had spoken with them today?
No, I'd spoken to, um, them, I believe on Monday.
Okay, and?
My understanding was that there were some inquiries made about having two ambulances here at the same time, or, you know, a, a regular one and a standby, and I guess they had given you some preliminary quotes of around $400,000, which shocked you all.
Yeah, that's, and that's above.
And I'll be honest, none of that shocks me at all.
But that's above and bonded, and just.
Beyond, above and beyond the 200, you already.
We're paying 220 now, so that costs another thing of 400.
I understand where they're coming from. I don't, I don't think Truettland County or any rural county is ever going to be able to afford having two ambulances at the same time.
Well, here's the thing, though, Tom, they got three sitting right over there.
I understand, it's the staffing, it's the staffing that gets you, not the ambulance.
I understand that.
I think the only way Truettland is ever going to be able to afford, if you say, I always want to make sure we have two ambulances ready at any time in Truettland County for calls, I think the only way you're ever going to be able to accomplish that at a price point you can afford is to maybe join Tooms and Montgomery's ambulance service. I don't know if they want you. I don't know if you want to be part of them, but trying to operate it by yourself, I, I think you're going to go broke doing that, because their 210,000 they charge you is not their true cost. What happened was Navisont, right or wrong, when they made their bid, they thought, well, we'll, we'll bid this cheap at a loss. We're going to make it up on insurance and private pay, and then we're also going to have Truettland County citizens as a referral line for our facilities, and it just hasn't worked out for them. And I, and I get it. This is not a new problem. From, from day one here, everyone expects when they call the ambulance to have an ambulance there in 15 minutes, and for a variety of reasons, it doesn't happen a lot. And then there have been several instances where someone had a 911 call, and the one ambulance we had assigned to Truettland County is in Macon or in Dublin, and I fully understand the frustration. I just don't think you're ever going to be able to afford to pay for two crews to sit there when we really average a little over, I think, one call a day here. Now, there are times we could probably use three ambulances here, you know, a few times during the year.
I understand, I understand with them. They, they got the, uh, the, uh, thing where they, the Tooms and Dublin would, would back us up when available, but, you know, it's just hard, it just, it just floored me to know the fact that they're going to be gone for two hours, and another call come in and they're telling us, we couldn't tell them that they weren't the ambulance coming.
I understand.
I, I didn't like that at all.
And it's, I guess it's hard to talk to a fellow citizen who's upset because a family member had an emergency, and everyone has the expectation that, oh, an ambulance is going to show up shortly, and it just doesn't always happen. Now, we can, if, if you guys want to fund one, you know, be it through Navisont or another service or on your own, we can do it. I think you're going to choke on the price at the end of the year, on what it costs you all.
We're on the contrary, you don't want to hold your end there.
Yes, ma'am, for one.
Yeah.
But it can be, at some point in time, if something's not kosher, um, we have the opportunity, now they, we go to them, they got so many days to get something corrected or not, and you can be amicable split.
Right, and I'll be honest with you, I think if you push them a little bit, they may give you a little 90-day notice to terminate without cause. I think, to be honest, there's probably administrators at Navisont who look at this and say, why are we even in the ambulance service in Truettland County, and they wouldn't mind if they had it. I, I'm not saying we need to be, I'm not saying people are be happy with what we got, but I'm not sure we can afford to provide whatever everyone wants.
What all the options we have, that, that's all I was wanting you to know.
Yeah, well, now, we could. My suggestion, I, I really don't think the county wants to be in the ambulance business. Now, that's just my opinion, that's just my opinion, uh, because if, you're going to be in the billing business then, you're going to be in the logistics business and more in the personnel business. I don't think you want to do that. I suppose, my, I don't know if anyone's ever talked to Tooms Montgomery Ambulance Service. Geographically, that's a natural fit. A lot of the people from here are probably either going to Dublin or Vidalia, and my guess is in an emergency, they'll go anywhere they need to go as long as they can get there quickly and get good care. I would explore seeing a, searching for a partnership with someone like that before we close the door on Navisont.
Or, was it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like, get in Lawrence County, they said, didn't want to have no part of that at one time.
The problem is, you guys aren't a real attractive dance partner. Because geographically, we're away from everybody else. A for-profit ambulance service is going to be looking at how can we generate revenue off of these people? That's what it's really about for them. Truettland County, we don't have a lot of people, we're having a, they're having to haul them away. The insurance and private pay, I'm sure, is not what their projections were going to be. So, now, if you want, if you, if Truettland, if this board decided our number one priority is we're going to do ambulance service above and beyond anything else, and if you guys wanted to vote more money than you're doing now, it can be done.
No, I'm not looking to raise taxes, that's, that's the least thing that I want to do, but I was just wanting to know what kind of options we did have.
I'm saying our, I think our, you have options, but I don't, I don't like any of your options, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Now, if you all want, I, you know, I know, I, I deal with the Tooms County manager every day, John over there, and I can ask him, I say, you know,
I've made that call.
Do you have, do you have room at your table for Truettland County? Would you be interested?
I've made that call.
Are they, are the lease bid interested?
He's supposed to call me back. Just, just to find out if that was, and I tell you, just to come clear, I've talked to him, and also, I've talked to one of our Ploria, EMA director, because he's comes from, from a, from a, um, a first responder background to kind of put us some numbers together to what we would be looking at if we did try to implement our own ambulance service. Just to ask, know, just like today when we opened these, just to know what kind of numbers we are looking at and what we're working with. But I do, you know, I, I've been the one on that call too, and I, you know, I don't, I don't like having to call the Sheriff's Department to see if the county is, if the ambulance is even in the county, whether I need to wait to see if that ambulance is going to show up, or I need to go out and throw them back, sit in my pickup and hotel with them.
Right.
But I, you know, I don't, this is not a problem.
That's the biggest thing that got me, is, you know, I, I made that comment to him, I said, why can't we get 911 or whoever, when they call in, you know, tell them that, look, you know, the ambulance is on another call, and it's going to be so and so long before they get there.
And the family can then make the decision whether or not.
The family can make the decision, but at least they would know, and he didn't, that's what he gave.
He told you that he couldn't do that?
Yeah. He told, he pretty much said that we, they couldn't do that. They couldn't, we couldn't tell them that none of them was coming. He said.
And what, and what you running into now?
He would have to look into the liability of it more, that he wasn't sure, but he didn't think that we could actually tell a person that we're not, we don't have an ambulance coming.
And that's why, and that's why I wanted to meet up there with them, because every time you try to say something to him, he goes to liability, liability, liability. So I want to go to actually the shark callers to let us know, you know, maybe what is an option, what's not an option.
To me, it was thinking like it'd be more of a liability for not telling somebody they're not coming, you know?
I, I get it. I get it.
How y'all doing? Sorry I'm late.
Mr. Moos.
Finding him, $5,000.
You got mine?
Yeah.
Essentially, where we at, uh, to back up, we're, uh, we're kind of, we opened the bids on the, the curbside servers for the trash. And we're going to get all the information to all the commissioners for them to look at the, uh, the bids, and we'll, we'll circle back on those before we make a decision on which way we are going with our trash down the road. Um, I think we all know that we got, we need to do something other than what we're doing, just deciding exactly what the correct answer is. It's, I think throughout the state and in rural Georgia, it's a big, it has a $10 million answer. But, um, right now, we're con, we're discussing ambulance. Um, we've had some problems due, due to COVID too, it's hurt us some too. You know, when these people go to the emergency room, a lot of times, there's no beds even available, so they can't just drop them out on the doorstep, so that leaves our ambulances out of the county even longer, and, um...
I would say even in the best case of this scenario, once a 911 call comes in and the ambulance is available and get, and it's dispatched, it's probably a minimum three-hour turnaround time.
He said two, he said at least two, two hours.
So, we, we, we're, I requested a meeting with the powers to be with Navisont, and I've reached out to, uh, and just, just to find out what's available to us on, and, and here's, you know, you kind of got your hands in the lines, man. If you don't want Navisont just to pull out and say, hey, they searching around, now we fixing to get the, we fixing to get dropped, we're going to go ahead and drop them, and that's not what I'm after. I'm just trying to see what's available to us. But I reached out to John James, the, the manager down in Tooms County, and, you know, and now, when I done that two years ago, and Homer's on here, Homer didn't even talk to me about it, and at that time, you know, they, they, they're, they're pushed just like everybody else. And, you know, I didn't get nothing promising, but I did get a promise phone call back after talking with their, um, ambulance director down there. I, I can't remember that young man's name, but, um, so, right now, where we at, we're with trying to meet with Navisont and work some of this stuff out. Um, got a call into them, see if they're interested in dealing with us, and also, um, our EM rate director, who comes from an ambulance background, is looking at maybe putting us a, a budget together of us just operating ambulance service ourselves.
Okay.
So, you know, there's, I know we're all getting calls about this, and this is a concern for everybody on the board, but these are the, the three things that I'm going right now towards trying to help solve this problem. And if anyone else has anything else that they think may be, help us work through to us, I'm, I want to hear it.
I think my question would be, if we do go into it ourselves, but we still run into this same problem when the ambulance is out, and they still can't just drop the patients off and leave, what are we going to do then?
Well, and, and here's the thing, I think, that, and I, listen, I, I'm not saying do nothing. I don't know. I haven't looked at enough, but I do know that every time I try to say something to them, and I even brought up this, I said, you know, maybe we could have some people who are employees of the county, whether it be someone like Josh or someone on the Sheriff's Department, who may not have advanced life care, um... Certifications, but they would be able to, if that call comes in just for backup, you know, be able to go grab an ambulance, and basically, if, if it's just a snatch and grab, it's still someone with some kind of services showing up at the, at the constituent's house. And, you know, and I said, at that point, you know, once they sign on, they, you know, they could be employees of Navisont far as I'm concerned, for, for any insurance purposes, but, you know, I think this board would be okay with funding that if there's any extra cost of that labor part of it, and, you know, and it, the time I said it, it was, it was DOA, it was done on the road.
No, they're not going to be the lease bid interested.
So, but, but see, if you're do, if you're doing that yourself, then you open it up, okay, hey, I may not have a tier one ambulance, but I still got an ambulance coming to help these people to send the rest, and, and, and maybe that's what you open yourself up when you run it yourself. I don't know.
Well, you know, a lot of your large cities, uh, not only have the ambulance service, they have a fire service also. Those fire service personnel are EMT, EMS certified or qualified, so, uh, it's a secondary or a backup. I see what you're saying, but I don't know.
And that's something we got to look at down the road too, far as our, our fire services, you know, with our fire department, a lot of the members work out of, out of town, and when they have that call during the day, there's, there's not but two or three here to see maybe would even go get a, a fire truck. So, you know, if you get into that, maybe you can have some double, have some people wearing more than one hat, where you got fire people and EMT people, you know, ready to respond to these calls. to respond to these calls.
Well, we got first responders anyway, and Josh is one, didn't he say that before that? He's just not, um, but the paramedic, he's not certified as a paramedic or whatever.
Yeah, the EMS, yeah.
And we do have those, but they won't play ball with, they won't let them go, I mean, they can go to the scene, but they won't let them go grab, and the county actually...
They're not supposed to transport.
Yeah, I'm sure he said he couldn't really do it at all.
And per our contract with them, excuse me, I shouldn't eat that piece of candy, that was ruining me, I think I choked it up now, but per our contract, we're supposed to supply one ambulance. Now, they don't use it, and it's set over there, and they finally moved it to the fire station, and I don't know what they're doing with it.
Taking out that, by the way, current.
But the county does on the fire department, but I don't think, even if we owned it, had our own call, like a backup, the way that we run through the counties, ambulance slices thing, I don't think we can even do that, talking to him.
Nope, you're an all-or-nothing proposition. I, I get your point, it makes perfect sense to kinda have a backup, and even if we're providing basic life support,
Right.
You know, kinda the old Green, Green Higgs method, you know, we'll, we'll do the best we can, we're gonna get you there.
Yeah.
They're not gonna, you're not gonna have a situation where you split it, and that's not just Navisant, that's gonna be any ambulance service you contact.
So, what do we do?
You're probably either gonna beg to join someone else's system, you're either gonna spend a lot more than you've been spending right now, or you learn to live with less.
All right, for all intents and purposes, I guess, you know, we're just, just ambulance business until we hear back, gather more data, then we'll try to circle back, and, but I just want everybody to know that we're all working on these items, and there are some things that we're trying to, to get done, and if anyone has any ideas of what we're working, we're trying to work through, feel free to, you know, let us know or...
Hey, you guys have an ambulance license, you can operate your own ambulance service. I wouldn't advise it, but you can, you can.
So, that would mean, how many people full-time added to it?
Well, are you guys, I guess, are you gonna want one crew or two crews at all times?
24/7.
And then you're gonna also have to have office staff, and you're gonna have to do billing.
But you would have some returns, revenue coming back in.
It's gonna be disappointing.
Yeah.
It's gonna be disappointing.
You might have revenues coming off the insurance, Medicaid, but self-pay, I just don't see that much.
You're gonna be disappointed with all of your outside revenue. I bet if Navisant actually showed us the true numbers of what they generate off of it, it's not gonna be all that impressive, above and beyond.
Probably not.
Above and beyond, you know, trying to collect from broke persons is hard to do.
And you got a lot of broke people, broke people.
Yeah, that's a right for work, money's tight for a lot of folks.
We, we have an elderly population here.
Yeah.
And I don't see that, it's only, everything's trending older in rural America too, this is, it's a problem now, it's only gonna get worse in the future for you two.
All right, as far as the, I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Hollis, I'll come back to yours in just a second, but your, Commissioner Hollis, number two, the trash, we've got these bids here, I asked everyone to take them, decipher them, please ask me or Ms. Angie if you want anything about what our current cost and what we're looking at, but let's please analyze this or get something, and maybe try to circle back together as a board in a few days and say, hey, we won't, as a board, we agree that we probably need to try to go this way, and let's have a public hearing, and maybe get it on the docket to go ahead and get this thing approved and get something going one way or another. The courthouse, we kinda hope, we're kinda, the deal with the courthouse and back to Commissioner Hollis is kinda what the plan was, is, obviously, we need to fix the roof before it got any worse, just to despair. There's some work inside that needs to be done, we need to do some work on the seating inside the actual courthouse, you know, it needs some window work, but all that aside, you know, kinda, I think the, the best thing to do, if we're going and remodel the defects, there's enough room to put a courtroom upstairs, and yet, we go ahead and get started on the remodeling of it, and then we can move our, all our operations over there, and then come back and, and finish out the courthouse. Is everybody kinda in agreeance of moving that way forward?
Question. Now, that was the, the old defects building, was also encapsulate TJ's office?
Every...
Everybody except the courthouse personnel, Sheriff's Office in Connie.
When you sheriff and your, your sheriff and your clerk has to set up office in the courthouse. They have to maintain, they have to maintain office in the courthouse.
So, there's a lot of counties who are uncompliant, if that's the rule.
And that's the thing about this, listen, there's a set of guidelines out there, and there's a lot of counties don't do a lot of things, I've known a lot of talking, but we're, we're trying to do that, we already got them there, but I would like to see, you know, once we decide, we could encapsulate everyone in that building right there, and have it nice, and have a courtroom upstairs.
And have vaults, secure.
Yes, and, and the thing about this building kinda, when I first come here, Commissioner Hollis first come here, that was slated to be demolished by past splash funds, but when you go in and look at it, that's one of the soundest buildings that's already standing, and it's there to send to county, and they actually, if you look at it, they some new brick on the side back towards the current annex, and that first floor, actually, the walls, just inside of it, they're actually block walls, so it would, it would have great storage for our vital documents. So, I think we can, we can work as a board and get that thing operational, where we can move everything to that one place, and then at that point in time, we can decide, you know, what, 'cause here's the thing, there's a bunch, we got a bunch of buildings, we have, most of them's got flat roofs, I signed a check today for patching on the annex building, you know, at some point, these things aren't where they need to be or not, cost efficient, you know, we gotta look at getting, doing something different. So, I think, you know, getting that thing up, getting it nice, and having everything right there on the courthouse square, one place to go, and, you know, and then we'll have the annex to sit there, maybe if we see we don't have enough room there, we need to leave something in the annex, you know, the way this voting is going, these voting machines, you know, maybe we could delineate the annex just for voter registrar and voting place, office, you know, get it more friendly for that, because in this, have everybody voting there in the library here, or maybe we'll make room where everybody can just go to one place and vote, and that, that stuff we can work on down the road, but I think for all intents and purposes, you know, I think the biggest thing far as our operation is, if we're gonna fix this building, let's fix it and let's get everybody over there that way, then we can start work on our courthouse. Does everybody get with that?
Absolutely.
All right, I'm just, just laying stuff out, which way, 'cause I didn't know which way y'all wanna move, you know, if we wanna, what we need to work towards, and I was, you know, kinda talking with different ones, that's kinda what I thought we had decided in the past. Far as the handbook, Commissioner Hollis, what do we need to do to be, is there certain, is there something, do we, does this thing need a total overhaul, is it a total, what's it need?
I think it's just a total, just a total look over, not just one specific thing, 'cause it hasn't been revised or anything in so long, so I don't think it's just one specific thing, just total.
Lieutenant, are there places that we can send this thing?
Carl Vincent Institute of Government at University of Georgia, they, that's what they do, generally, they'll, and we've talked, this board's in the past, with prior membership has talked about it, they never wanted to do it, for one, it cost about $10,000 for them to come in, and what they'll do is they'll totally revamp all your personnel policies and procedures. What always, what always seemed unpalatable to prior board members was, part of the thing was, they would do a compensation policy, where they'd have a standardized salary schedule or hourly rate schedule, and they'd classify all employees, kinda like a, like you would at a school district or state employees, you know, you have a grid, you have a grid, and if your job position is this, and you have this many years of service, you know exactly where you are on compensation. So, you're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. I've never had a board here who had any interest whatsoever in that, because all boards seem to be upset whenever someone wanted a raise, but they always like to control that on a board level instead of having a standardized system.
Think standardized, just me.
But I've never had a board willing to pull the trigger, and you've probably heard that over the years too, Angie.
Well, it's just hard for me to agree to give someone a raise just because they have tenure, and you got, they're holding up a shovel, and you got somebody over there slinging that shovel, that's just more valuable to a person, so that's the only thing I say about that.
I get, I get your point.
But, but back to the handbook, you know, I, you know, I don't know, in, I guess there is some things in this handbook, and maybe as a board, we can, we can look at it and see if anything certain that grabs our eyes, that maybe we need to look at to get that thing updated. Maybe we could try that first and see what we come up with, and if we think that, hey, this is lost cause, we need, we need, we need some help here and get something totally redone, then we can look at going through them, maybe just helping us get us a handbook, or we may reach out and see somebody else's handbook, we like, I, I don't know, 'cause you gotta get five to, you gotta get a quorum to agree on what to do with it. Commissioner Hollis was courthouse handbook in semi-parking at the last meeting, about the semi-parking, we had, who was the two members that wanted?
Me and her, and we had, she, we hadn't got together.
All right, they're supposed to get with the city and see what the cities, where they at with it, and see if they're willing to work something together about the semi-parking, so we kinda took that up at the last meeting, and we're waiting to hear back on that. Quinn, is there anything in your top three that you'd like to see the board working towards here next year?
I want something done with the park over there, the old park. I want that moving forward. You know, we've been talking about it for a year or so, and I'm all about consolidating all services, put all of our services together, not saying it's a checks and balances, but it's better to have everything in one spot, especially from a, from a, from an activity standpoint, just like everything, you go to courthouse, you go to annex, or you can come over here, if you're one location, guess what, one, one shot. I'd like to have, I'd like to see our county department over there, what is the status on that? Or are they still saying that it's gonna cost $7,000 of that?
In the, in the 1970s and in the 1980s, the city also potentially received two small grants of, I believe, one was maybe $30,000 and one was $10,000 for playground equipment. As a result of that, that property is subject to restrictive covenant for it to be used for recreation purposes, and it's, I'd hoped it'd be as simple as just saying, how about we pay the money back? Or we've developed, you know, the county's developed this recreational park out here, and that's where the focus is, and that's not satisfying anyone from the DNR or the federal government. I think the only way you're ever gonna get a clear title for that over there is, let's say, for instance, you wanna develop, you wanna sell eight acres from the Rec Authority to the county for development for, say, county facilities.
Right.
We're gonna have to buy eight acres in the county as replacement property and dedicate it towards recreation in the future. We get no credit for, Lord knows how much money has been spent out there on the ball fields or for any place else. It's not about necessarily what you've done somewhere else, you're gonna have to replace that site, if that's what you wanna do.
I'll, I'll add to this, I've reached out to the state government, and there, the funds come from the Fed, it's federal money, so it was a Department of Natural Resources grant, one was like 46 years ago, one was 30-something years ago. So, it's federal, and I've reached out and to our local representation, to God's phone Wilton today, and they're gonna do a congressional inquiry into the parks and divisions about trying to get that, those things released off the piece of property so the Rec, Recreation Authority can do whatever they, they can or can't do anything with it. So, that, that's an interesting question, I was kinda tied up, I don't know what's gonna happen with it, is this political, and, you know, it's kinda somebody telling you what you can and can't, it's a dime holding up a dollar, but it is what it is, and we gotta, we keep going forward. We're working on it, number two.
That was the only thing I've got.
All right. So, you know, that's, it was kinda, not much we can do right there with that. Without being said, does anyone have anything else they'd like to add to the discussion?
I'd like to add that, that what you're talking about, why don't you put that out there in low fat?
Um, that, that, we're, we're, we're not entertaining the public, appreciate you coming, appreciate you coming, being a part, but this, this is not the public comments part, part of, if you feel more than welcome to reach out to any commissioner after the meeting. Um... Is anything else, anyone want to add? The part I had to talk about, we're gonna take up in the executive session, so I guess that concludes this part of the meeting, the public portion of the meeting today. Appreciate everyone for coming.
Do we need a motion in a second and go into executive session?
Yeah, we gotta have it. I'm gonna get my board. Who makes the motion to executive session? In terms of land purchase. Need a motion?
Let's just wait, let's just wait and see.
I wasn't trying to be rude by not answering your call, but Kayla was on there.
I picked up another call, and that's why I was late. Happy, happy Joe, Joey. How you doing, Joey?
I'm doing, I'm doing.
Me too. Me too. Vidalia, how you doing?
We have a motion in a second.
We decided we're gonna do it.
What you doing, we're going into executive session for a purpose of discussing a potential land acquisition?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, go to executive session.
I'll have a second.
I'll suck it.